Good morning. I'd like to call to order the November 14th, 2019 Planning Commission to order. Could the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner White?
Here.
Chair Adukas?
Here.
Commissioner Kay?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
When you begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now's the time set aside for public comments. These are comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, approval of minutes for the September 12th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting.
Move approval of the minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. I said yes, I didn't push it, sorry.
Thank you. Moving on, we will hear case number PL-19-0003 and PL-19-0041, Peak Operator LLC Appellant.
Good morning, Chair Adukas and Commissioners. My name is Bonnie Luke and I'm the current Oil and Gas Program Manager for Ventura County Planning Division. The case before you this morning is a request by Peak Operator LLC of the following determinations by the Planning Director: issuance of a notice of violation, case number PV-19-0003, and the related nullification of zoning clearance, ZZ-12-1052. These cases center around a notice of violation that was issued to Peak Operator by the Planning Division on January 18th, 2019 with regards to their facility -- sorry, wrong clicker -- at 4201 Sturgis Road in Oxnard. This site is located between the cities of Oxnard and Camrio, just southwest of the Camrio Airport. Peak's current facility extends over the southern portions of two parcels that are divided by the Revelon Slough. The land use designation for these parcels is agricultural exclusive with a 40-acre minimum lot size, and the land use designation within the general plan is agricultural. Peak's facility is located on eastern edge of the Oxnard Oil Field in what is known as the HBH lease. The Oxnard Field is a well-established oil field that has been in commercial development since the 1930s and has produced over 10 million barrels of oil to date. It is currently the fourth-most productive field within the county and is in active production. As you might expect, like many other types of development within the county, oil and gas operations are subject to certain permitting requirements that are outlined in the county's noncoastal zoning ordinance. Specifically, the county's noncoastal zoning ordinance states that issuance of and adherence to a conditional use permit issued by the Planning Division is required to engage in oil and gas exploration and production. A related section of the noncoastal zoning ordinance also requires that operators obtain a zoning clearance to confirm consistency with the underlying conditional use permit and the noncoastal zoning ordinance's requirements when they drill new wells, commence site preparation for those wells, and install other related appurtenances as defined by the Planning Director. So we've just covered how there's requirements under the NCZO for you to obtain a CUP and related zoning clearance for operations for oil and gas. The operations in question here, that Peak operates under our conditional use permit, PL-14-0195, which covers the areas you see on this slide here. The subject sites that are the subject of the notice of violation that was issued are highlighted in blue on the slide on each side of Revelon Slough, and there's an additional section up to the northwest. The Planning Division received an application from Peak in the fall of 2017, ZZ-17-1084. That application requested additional facilities and wells at this location. During the course of Planning's review of this application, certain anomalies and inconsistencies were determined to have occurred on the site that required further review investigation by the Planning Division. This slide here shows you a close-up of the lower portion of the permit area where the subject violations took place. This slide shows you aerial image from 2002 that outlines the three existing idle wells that were on the site.
I'm sorry, did you say 2002?
Sorry, 2012.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies. These three wells have not been actively utilized for production since the 1990s. One other thing to note about this area, the zoning, was AE-40, and these lands are subject to LCA contracts. The existing facility site plan that was submitted with this application package, one page of that that shows the existing facilities is shown here. This is what triggered staff to initiate additional review. We had some questions about the placement of the facilities that we saw on this site plan in relation to existing approved development from previous zoning clearances that had been issued to the property. Specifically, zoning clearance 12-1052, which was issued in December of 2012. The approved site plans and project description for that development involve the development of approximately three-acre pad in the lower southwest corner, and then a possible .5-acre satellite pad on the other side of the Revelon Slough. For reference, on the previous slide you'd seen the idle wells. One of the existing idle wells would be located here, and the other two are within where the main pad was proposed. A close-up of what was approved with that site plan is shown on the right-hand side of this slide, and it shows that the proposed well locations that were approved were a series of 24 wells that extended along the western side of the main drill pad. Four additional wells were proposed along the very northern edge of the proposed satellite pad. Facilities included tankage and accessory treatment and processing. The location of the existing idle well, again, in relation to the proposed development is one was here and one was located outside of what was proposed for the development Staff requested some additional information from the appellant in order to clarify some of the discrepancies we noted between the site plan and what we saw on aerial images and in zoning clearance 12-1052. This slide shows you the approved versus as-built drilling pads. As you can see, what was approved under ZZ-12 is shown in yellow and shows you that main drilling pad that was proposed and the additional satellite pad that was potentially proposed. Again, the wells that were proposed were going to be drilled along the western edge here and along the very northern edge here. As you can see from the slide, this facility was actually built out to encompass approximately nine acres, as shown in the pink highlight areas. Additionally, there were four wells that were placed on satellite pads that were shown here, a one-acre pad on the western side of Revelon Slough, actually two of those, and then two additional temperature observation wells were placed on an existing but the idle well pad associated with the other idle well on the site. No wells were drilled on the satellite pad that was approved under the zoning clearance. Other issues that were apparent in looking at this were that the floodplain in that area extends through the southwestern -- sorry, southeastern portion of what was the approved drilling pad, and with the expansion of the as-built area, there are equipment and facilities located both further within the floodplain as well as within the 100-foot road setback from Sturgis Road to the south and the side setback from the property line on the western side. These included tankage, processing facilities, storage containers. This slide shows you a little bit closer view of the as-built facilities on this parcel. As you can see, in this sort of southeast corner of the drilling pad, there are extensive tanks. Now, from zoning clearance 12, there were seven tanks that were proposed, all at 1,000 barrels in size. What has been built is approximately 36 to 40 storage tanks of 400 barrels each, so this is an increase both in the volume of storage over what was applied for and approved as well as changes in the location from where those were approved. Again, the well locations were approved along the western side, and the drill pad was much smaller than has been built out. The wells were actually installed not along the western side entirely. There's wells that were installed here in the southwest, and then additional wells that were placed in the center of the pad. There's also office trailers and the emergency flare associated with the facility. Now, this emergency flare from the original approved plans from ZZ-12 was proposed to be located approximately here on the site, in the southeast corner of the plans. It is located in the upper northwest corner of the extended drilling pad that has been Sorry, wrong way. This slide provides you with abbreviated timeline of some of the key events in the processing that staff did with regards to this notice of violation. You can see that we accepted the zoning clearance application, revised plans were submitted in February of 2018. Subsequently, staff determined that a site visit was necessary in order to further ascertain, you know, what had occurred at the site and confirm whether there were violations that were present. Staff conducted a joint site visit with a member of the Building and Safety Department. A second site visit was conducted by county staff, including the Planning Director, in August -- sorry, November of 2018, and after much deliberation, staff determined to issue a notice of violation in January 18 of 2019. Peak Operator timely appealed that determination, and the Planning Director issued a nullification of zoning clearance 12-1052, and Peak also issued a timely notice -- or, sorry, a timely appeal of that determination as well, and that's led us to this hearing today. So the grounds of the appeal for PV-19-0003 that were submitted by Peak Operator and for the related nullification of zoning clearance 12-1052 are that PV-19-0003 and the nullification notice were issued in error and have no factual or legal merit. Peak submitted an attachment with their appeal form that included additional information. Within that attachment, staff has gleaned certain issue areas that we've called out more specifically for addressing. So grounds of appeal number one that we've addressed are that facilities do not require permitting because they are temporary facilities. Staff's response to this is that the facilities were installed in 2013. They were determined not to be exempt from permitting requirements, and they are not considered temporary facilities. The zoning clearance application instructions very clearly require that an applicant provide a true, full, and correct account of the proposed project. That does not seem to have occurred in this case because what's been built does not match what was applied for and approved. Peak has not submitted any evidence to support their claims that county staff advised them that the permits were not required for these facilities. Grounds of appeal two submitted by the appellant are that all structures have been generally approved and permitted by the Planning Division through appropriate entitlements and permitted by the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District and the Department of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources in the exact locations where they stand today. The as-built facilities and equipment are not consistent with zoning clearance 12-1052. They're not consistent either in their location or in the equipment that was put on the site. The approval by other agencies that are not within the Planning Division or within the county family does not absolve an applicant or a perma-te to obtain the appropriate local, state, and federal approvals for their development and their compliance with our requirements. They did not obtain permits from several of the other required agencies they should have needed to talk to, including Building and Safety, Public Works, and Environmental Grounds of appeal number three, that the information regarding the pad size in the notice of violation is factually incorrect. The development footprint has been confirmed at approximately 9.5 acres versus the 3.5-acre size footprint that was approved under zoning clearance 12-1052. The appellant's calculations disputing this fail to account for large areas of what they term to be open space that have been used for storage, parking, and have been removed and devoid of vegetation that would normally be held in agricultural cultivation on this site. Additionally, the emergency flare, for example, has been located at the far northwestern portion of the developed graded pad, which is well outside the footprint of the developed area that was proposed and approved under zoning clearance 12-1052. The calculations also don't include areas of disturbance used for access roads to the site, for other setback areas from the road where they currently have equipment in place. It is, as with any of our permits, the applicant's responsibility to obtain review and approval of any plan alterations that they may have. So in going to another agency and finding that that agency's requirements may differ or require a modification to what they obtained approval from, from the Planning Division, if those are not in substantial conformance with what was already approved, you would need to come back to the Planning Division and have us review that change in your application and in your approved project. This slide shows you a comparison of the development footprint from 2013 before the development was put in place to 2014, when it began. As you can see, there was very minimal disturbance related to the existing two idle wells on the site, and here you see Revelon Slough and the other idle well. You can see where farm labor was being used to cultivate the fields there, and it was being used partly for parking, but you can see a storage tank that's related to that well, and otherwise everything else is in fields. By 2014, the site was fully built out, all the way to that second idle well pad here, as well as with the additional satellite pads that were installed, and, again, expansion, I mean, of use of this satellite pad over here that was not part of the original proposal. This just highlights the extent of that. Grounds of appeal number four that staff identified within the appellant's documents are that the current setbacks noted in the NCZO are inapplicable because the underlying CUP, PL-14-0195, predates the triggering of those setbacks. They also contend that the 100-foot setback is not listed explicitly within zoning clearance 12-1052, and that the only items that would have violated the purported setbacks are what they consider to be temporary facilities. Again, the 100-foot road setback is an NCZO requirement that has been imposed on all new drilling development since 1961. The wells that were put in place did not get put in place until 2013. The 100-foot road setback is similar, not an exception to the setback requirements, it's the rule. Zoning clearance permits will state an area within the permit where planning staff can put in if there are exceptions to the existing setbacks that would be applicable to a particular project. There were no such exceptions, and the 100-foot setback would therefore not necessarily be called out because it's the standard. The subject facilities, again, have been in place since 2013 and are not considered temporary facilities and are not exempt from setback requirements. Grounds of appeal number five is that the information in the notice of violation regarding building and safety requirements is factually incorrect. One of the appellant's contentions is that the numerous tanks that they placed on the site are exempt from building and safety's permitting requirements. Building and safety staff have confirmed that the tank permitting exemptions that the appellant has felt they fell under would only apply to potable water tanks that have a capacity of less than or equal to 5,000 gallons, which is equivalent to about 119 barrels. Now, the majority of the tanks that were placed on the site are 400 barrels in size and well exceed any exemption requirement. Additionally, these tanks are for the purposes of holding diluent, oil, possibly produced water. They are not for potable water use. The installation also of the office trailers that were put on the site would require building and safety review and approval, and this was not obtained. Grounds of appeal number five are that the information in the notice of violation regarding -- oops, sorry, I went the wrong way again. Grounds of appeal number six are that all relevant APCD and DOGAR permits were obtained and that the main drilling and production pad was permitted via the county. Again, approvals by other agencies or entities, including APCD and DOGAR, doesn't absolve a perma-te or an applicant of the responsibility to obtain the required permits from the county agencies and abide by the requirements of the NCZO. A full, true, and correct account of the proposed project must be provided. Now, the appellant has contended that much of what they proposed is simply part of what will become their eventual project, and that they always had an intention of building what was shown on the final zoning clearance plans as soon as it became feasible, and that this represents, the temporary facilities represent steps that they did not feel that they needed to show to the Planning Division or other agencies in order to obtain approval of their project. This is simply not the way that our process works. Even when somebody is putting on a facility in place, we would require them to show that on the plans if something was going to be removed. That's what allows us to, five years from now, be able to figure out whether something is or isn't in conformance with both our code and the previous plans. The only public comment that has been received to date regarding this notice of violation appeal is from the appellant. I received it yesterday afternoon. The letter restates the appellant's grounds of appeal very briefly, and the appellant takes issue with certain content within the staff report, so I'll take the opportunity to reply to some of those points now. In their letter, the appellant takes--
This is Exhibit A?
Yes, this is Exhibit A, my apologies. The appellant references that the size of the development in the staff report is referenced incorrectly. As we've discussed and shown on the slides, staff has confirmed in multiple ways that the area of disturbance that has been involved in this development and continues to be involved in this development far exceeds what was approved and authorized under zoning clearance The second point is that references to the current ordinances are, again, not applicable. This point has already been addressed. However, additional clarification can probably be provided by county council as to any questions regarding the applicability of the zoning ordinances when they came into play and how we view them in regards to permits that were issued sometime previously. Point three in the letter regards the satellite pads and states that the staff report does not provide full information and does not show the planned satellite pad. This was merely due to the fact that the approved satellite pad under zoning clearance 12 was located on the adjacent parcel and was not developed, and so therefore wasn't part of what was at issue under the notice of violation that was issued. But as you saw on the earlier slides, slides number 11 and 12, I believe, do show the location of that approved satellite pad. Peak also contends that the satellite pad shown in the application for ZZ-12-1052 was always inside the floodplain, and this is true only in that a portion of the pad. All four of the wells that were proposed on the satellite pad were located outside of the floodplain, and all of the wells that were initially proposed in zoning clearance 12, as well as the other facilities and tanks, were all originally proposed outside of the The appellant takes issue, again, with the setbacks, the 100-foot setback that is required under the NCZO, and claims that that does not apply because the CUP predates the first codification of that in 1961. The NCZO is very specific that all new drilling that would occur after 1961 and the new wells that were put in place definitely occurred after that time. Numbers five and 10 of the letter refer specifically to contentions regarding building and safety permits. It states that the staff report claims that building permits were required and states that Peak's post-field inspection follow-ups with building and safety resulted in the building and safety representative agreeing that the height and width ratio of Peak's tanks did not require anchoring and permitting. And with regards to that, we've requested a comment from Matt Wyatt, who is the representative of building and safety that both conducted the site visit with planning staff in April of 2018 and had subsequent conversations and meetings with the appellant. And his response, I'll put it here. Just a moment, I apologize.
Do we have it as Exhibit 25?
Mr. Matt Wyatt's response is that at no time he stated that the permits would not be required. He confirms that he did state the size was in agreement with the code, which is 2019 Ventura County Building Code Section 105.2, Number 6. However, the size, 5,000-gallon maximum, and the required height-to-width ratio of the tanks, which is expected to be 2 to 1, is only part of the consideration for this exemption. The code expressly exempted water tanks as described in the section, and the opinion of building and safety, the intended use of these exempted tanks would be related to water storage for potable water uses for housing, fire suppression, or to support agricultural watering needs. I was quite clear in my request for the processed fluid to be more defined and additional information requested before an informed decision could be made on the tanks in question. Again, the tanks in question have been labeled "on plans" and "as holding diluent, oil, and other related products," not potable water. In response to number 10, where the appellant states that the staff report claims that building and safety permits were required, and states that despite Mr. Wyatt's current view, at the time he stated that the height-width ratio was okay on the tanks, and they did not require anchoring. Mr. Wyatt's response is that I will again answer this as I answered the previous-- Mr. Wyatt's response is that, "I will again answer this as I answered the previous question number five. I made a request to provide further information about the fluid being stored in these tanks to determine the proper code-based answer to the permitting questions. The fluid described is not clearly in compliance with the intent of the code section stated in 2019 Ventura County Building Code Section 105.2, Number 6, water tanks." Unfortunately, Mr. Wyatt is detained elsewhere making a presentation, but if there is additional questions that anybody has, he's asked that we can attempt to contact him, and he will try to make as prompt a response as possible. The remaining questions within the comment letter submitted by Peak. Number six, claims relating to nullification. The appellant states that the staff report claims that the application did not accurately depict or describe the actual design and scope of Peak's intended development of the They also had questions regarding the permanent facilities were approved by DOGAR and Ventura County APCD, and that any minor deviations would be resolved through the submittal of as-built plans that are consistent with Peak's longstanding plans. Again, temporary facilities, these are not temporary facilities. These facilities have been in place since 2013. They were not, as described, on the application or within the description that was submitted to staff for review in 2012. Peak also raised issue with the fact that they were never advised of any stay regarding the nullification, and instead was instructed only that a new zoning clearance would be submitted to continued development. Staff wishes to clarify that Peak appealed the nullification determination. As soon as that appeal was placed, staff's ability to proceed with any, anything else that nullification is stayed pending review by your board of this appeal. Number seven in the letter refers to the zoning clearance in 2015. The staff report claims that the scope of work for that review was only related to two trailers, and that this is false, that this zoning clearance case number reactivated the entirety of the plan approved under zoning clearance ZZ12-1052, and that this slightly modified, was slightly modified by the planning division to remove two trailers, but the rest of the scope of work was identical to zoning clearance 12. This probably requires a little bit of clarification. So in 2012, the zoning clearance was approved, and plans were stamped and signed. The only additional written record we have regarding this particular set of plans is that in 2015, there is a revised plan, one of the multiple pages of plans within zoning clearance 12, and there is a change to the project description. The only change in the description was the elimination of the two office trailers that had previously been included in zoning clearance 12's description. And on the one plan that shows those office trailers was highlighted in ink, office trailers to be removed, and that plan was restamped then. Often what happens when somebody has a very minor change to an approved plan, say a change in piping or a garden shed that's ever so slightly moved, is that plan will be reviewed. And if it's in substantial conformance, those plans will be restamped so that we have an accurate accounting of what was approved. I cannot speak to exactly what happened at that time, as I was not here and none of the staff involved in that application are present longer. However, the only evidence we have is the project description, which simply states that this would remove those two office trailers from the approved plans under, that were approved previously under zoning clearance 12. And that's zoning clearance 15-0779. The appellant's letter, number eight, also takes issue with permits from other agencies and states that Peak did not seek to obtain any permits for the temporary facilities, as stated in the staff report, and that Peak contends that they did obtain permits from APCD and DOGAR. As we've already covered, obtaining permits from other agencies does not absolve you from obtaining permits from the required county agencies and in compliance with the standards of the zoning ordinance. Peak contends that there are, you know, individuals who are willing to submit declarations and statements that they were informed by staff that they did not need permits for the development proposed. They have been asked repeatedly over the course of the investigation to provide any evidence they might have that would help support this. There is no evidence that has been submitted by the appellant at this date to staff for review that supports any of these allegations. We can only go off of what we have in the written record, and the written record supports Number nine in the letter discusses the definitions of temporary versus permanent facilities and simply states that the staff report employs the definition of permanently, explains what that is, that it's lasting only for, that temporary is lasting only for a limited period of time, not permanent, and the definition of permanently is, in a way, that is not brief or temporary. Peak contends that in this case, there is no doubt that the temporary facilities are temporary in nature for the reason that they were never meant to be there long-term and were always intended to be removed when the final scope of work was approved. Again, the intention to do something and actually doing it are two different things. We would still have required that temporary facilities be shown on any plans, and we do not consider that the development that was put in place is in compliance with what was requested or approved under zoning clearance 12. We've already given you a response from Mr. Matt Wyatt regarding item number 10. Item number 11 merely states that the staff report takes issue with grading, and that Peak is stating that they did stabilize the eastern part of the main pad that extends into the floodplain. Now, with the staff report, you will have noticed that staff included an exhibit that's rather extensive, that is the Public Works Agency's grading and floodplain permit record for this site. Obviously, it contained approximately 160 pages that are a little hard to wade through at times. We do have a member of the Public Works Department, Mr. Jim Otusa, with us today in case you require any clarification as to that record. With regard to item number 12 in this letter, procedural questions relating to nullification. The appellant claims that Peak's only proposals to date have involved continued expansion of the subject facilities prior to remediation of the outstanding violations, and Peak contends that this is false, and that they submitted as-built zoning clearance to approve the existing structures, and also submitted a compliance agreement meant to cooperate with the county. Staff wishes to clarify, the compliance agreement was an initial draft compliance agreement. It was not formally submitted, but they did submit some information for us to review and discuss. That compliance agreement proposed a continued development of the site with an eventual removal of the facilities that are in violation by June of 2020, but was predicated on staff continuing to allow the appellant to build out what they had already requested under the currently pending zoning clearance, zoning clearance 17-1084. The as-built zoning clearance that they also submitted later is zoning clearance case number ZZ19-0889, and that zoning clearance is currently waiting for the determination from your commission regarding the appeals before you, before it can be processed. The final issue within the letter is that the CUP drilling depths listed in the staff report, the staff's claims that the CUPs involved in this permitting action are restricted to certain depths, and Peak takes issue with this and states that there are no depth restrictions that are applicable to the developments that they would propose under these permits. Staff would refer you to Exhibit number 22, which is a letter in response to Peak Oil that staff sent on, I think I just said it, but September 12, 2019. And in that letter, staff spells out additional concerns that during the course of our review of the zoning clearance application ZZ17-1084, that staff has determined that zoning clearance would not necessarily be the correct path forward for review of what Peak's proposed At this time, I'll review the appellant's recommended action regarding this issue. The appellant requests that your commission take the following actions: dismiss the notice of violation PV19-0003, to rescind the nullification of zoning clearance 12-1052, and finally, to approve zoning clearance application ZZ17-1084. Staff's recommended actions are that you certify that you reviewed and considered the staff report on all exhibits and have considered all comments received during the public hearing process, that you uphold the violations set forth in notice of violation PV19-0003, and deny the related appeal PL19-0003 in its entirety, and decline to refund any appeal fees. Staff also recommends that you uphold nullification of ZZ12-1052, deny the related appeal PL19-0041 in its entirety, and decline to refund any appeal fees. And specify that the clerk of the planning commission is the custodian of the records and materials associated with the record constituting this decision. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Before we have questions, we have to have commission disclosures. So at this time, I will, I would like to ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that's not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. I'll start to my left. Commissioner Rodriguez, this one is—
I'm familiar with the area, very familiar with the area. Coincidentally, I happened to drive by the site on Sturgis Road yesterday. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner King?
I have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Wyatt?
I have no disclosures, other than I drove by there yesterday and had a look.
And I have no disclosures. So are there any questions at this time? Commissioner King?
Ms. Luke, I'm not sure I heard you well, so this may be a stupid question, but I'll ask it because I'm stupid. You talked about Mr. Wyatt's response about the tanks needing permit or not needing permit, and I thought you indicated that, he indicated that he really needed more information? Is, and that was somehow in writing? Is that correct?
That's correct. In response to the appellant's letter that we received yesterday afternoon, and knowing that Mr. Wyatt was going to be unavoidably detained from being present this morning, we requested Mr. Wyatt to respond to the letter, and he responded via email, which you guys have received copies of in your packets this morning, I believe.
We did?
Yes. And it would be Exhibit number, did we do it? 25.
Okay, was, is that on the web? Because I don't have a copy of, a hard copy of it. Okay, issue resolved.
Are there any other questions at this time? Commissioner Rodriguez?
I have a question. I read it in the reports. I thought I read it in the reports, and you talked about it on the appellate's later on, on number 13. Regarding drilling depths, what was originally authorized and what the contention is now as far as the depths? I think it's 4,700 square, it's 4,700 feet depth on the original permits was the restriction? And the contention is now going below, going beyond 4,700? Is that correct?
It's a good question, Commissioner. The Oxnard Plain has, as you guys may have heard other, from other venues, a very complex and very long history of oil and gas development. This particular area of the Oxnard Plain is unique. It contains several different kinds of reserves, different layers of reserves of oil. The reserve that the appellant has targeted is what's known as the Vaca Tar sands, which is a fairly shallow feature within the plain. Some of the eldest wells drilled on the plain were tapping into a much deeper area of the plain called McInnes Pool, which is located around 8,000 or so feet deep. The Vaca Tar sands are somewhere between about 1,500 to 2,500 feet in-depth, so they're much shallower. So within the plain, the original permits that were issued out there, CUPs 114, 181, 393, and 181 and 393 are two of the underlying permits that were combined to form the subject permit PL14-0195 that the appellant has applied under. Those permits, due to the mineral leases that the applicants at the time had and proposed for those permits under, were for deep drilling. What the appellant's proposal is for is for shallow drilling.
I'm sorry, for what?
For exceptionally deep drilling, below 4,700 feet, below 5,000 feet. And the appellant's project is for drilling above those levels in order to accommodate that change that would normally trigger a modification to that permit or a new permit. And there has been a similar proposal in the past on the plain that is similar in scope and scale to what the appellant has proposed and is proposing under zoning clearance ZZ17-1084, and that was done under CUP 3566 in 1979. That proposal involved the development of the Vaca Tar sands as well, and was a proposal similar to the appellant's for a cyclic steam injection project of approximately 120 wells. That project was deemed at the time, the applicant at the time was Santa Fe Energy, and they held rights to certain of the CUPs, 114, 393, and, I believe, 610, that all covered and overlapped within the area. In order to accommodate their proposal at that time, they would have needed to modify all three of those permits. They opted instead to apply for a new permit, this 3566. In a similar fashion, the appellant today, in order to address the differing depth restrictions from those underlying older permits, would probably need to apply for a modified permit.
Thank you for that information.
Was that confusing enough? I'm sorry.
Just to clarify, Jeff Barnes, county council, I'm representing the planning division. And I, just to put the information, and Ms. Luke, I think, explain that as clearly as possible, you know, this is a, there's a lot of facts and issues going on with the drilling depths and the underlying discretionary permits. But I just want to point out, it's the planning divisions' position that the drilling depth issue and the scope of those underlying permits isn't before your commission today because the zoning clearances that the planning division is alleging have been violated were issued, you know, regardless of whether or not they should have been issued based on the drilling depth issue. They were issued. And so what the planning division's position is today is that, yeah, number one, like I said, the zoning clearance was issued, but number two, Peak has violated that zoning clearance, and so the violation itself is before your commission today, so you don't need to get into the drilling depth issue, which the planning divisions' position, as Ms. Luke explained, would have to be dealt with at a later— would have to be dealt with at a, at a later date, but it's not before your commission today. So I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Thank you. And, and I guess the, what I was, I was curious to know is, where is these wells in relation to the Fox Canyon aquifer under the Oxnard Plain? I seem to think that they're over.
That is correct.
So that's something we'd have to consider at some point. Thank you.
Commissioner King, further question?
Thank you. This question is for County Council. In the very last slide presented, it appears they were asking the commission to dismiss the notice of violation, rescind the notification, and approve clearance application ZC 17-1084. Unless I'm mistaken, it seems to me that Item 3 cannot be before the commission because that's not the subject of an appeal. Am I correct?
That's a good question. So the, that zoning clearance was, was submitted, and it's a, I suppose we should put the question back on the planning staff as to what their position is as to the status of that zoning clearance. But as for your commission, if the commission determines that, because it's a ministerial permit, you can evaluate whether that zoning clearance should or should not be issued based on the criteria that are relevant for zoning clearances. So does that make sense?
It sort of does, but for me, it begs the question, since ZC 17-1084 never went through the whole process of review with staff, I would, I would be concerned as a commissioner that we're kind of usurping staff's job here.
Well, that...
Maybe I'll jump in for the, the Planning Division position?
Sure.
Because I, yeah, there's a lot of different zoning clearances being thrown around, and so, and Bonnie, or Ms. Luke, correct me if I'm wrong, but ZC 17-1084, that's the zoning clearance that would approve the as-built for what was actually developed? Is that it?
Zoning clearance ZC 17-1084 is a proposal for a buildout of Peak's proposed facility of 65 new wells and a pertinent facilities.
Yeah, so that's for expanding the facility. So the Planning Division's position, Commissioner King, is, is basically in line with what you said. The, the Planning Division has not acted on that application for a number of reasons, and I don't think we even need to get into that. But that, until a decision is made by the Planning Division, it's the Planning Division's position that, that issue can't come before your commission.
That's what I thought.
Because you, you have appellate authority, and no primary decision has been made yet for numerous reasons, including the fact that, under the zoning ordinance, we can't act on that until this violation case is resolved.
Good, thank you.
So just to follow up, that in light of Planning Division's position that they have not taken action on that zoning clearance because of these intervening matters, I would agree that that matter is not before your commission.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, and I only have one speaker card, and that is for the appellant. And is, is it Sima Samimi?
Well done, yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Chair. Thank you for your time and for your questions and for your thought-out decision-making on this issue. My name is Sima Samimi. I'm with Jeffrey Mangles, Butler &amp; Mitchell. We represent the appellant in this matter. I'm also here with Michael Corey, who's the CEO of Peak Oil Holdings LLC. Here's the, the main gist of where I want to go with my presentation today. I think what's missing from the staff report and the staff presentation is context. And that's what led to a lot of the questions that I heard today. Really, if you understand the context and understand the reasoning behind the temporary facilities, I think it'll, it'll help to elucidate what's really before the commission today and why the appeals should be granted. So the bulk of this presentation is to help the planning commission understand the context and the factual background that has led us to where we are today. And then I'll get into, the second part of my presentation, I'll get into a couple of specific points about the notice of violation and the notice of nullification, and then I'll be available for any questions for the commission. So jumping into the context, I want to first start by giving a general overview of where I'm going with this before I get to the specific kind of history of where the project went. So at the conclusion of my presentation about this issue, it should become clear that Peak has attempted to engage cooperatively with the county at every turn to develop the property legally and subject to its approvals, including the zoning clearance from 2012. That is the issue for the notice of violation and the nullification. However, the county's inaction, and it was the county's failure to work cooperatively with Peak that has led to the notice of violation and the nullification, not any action or inaction by Peak itself. Indeed, Peak was in the midst of a collaborative submittal and processing of what we've been calling zoning clearance 2017. I'll just call it ZC 17 from now on, which would have allowed Peak to remove all of the temporary facilities, which are the subject, really, all of the notices of violation that, that are before you are related to the temporary facilities, and I'll get into that when I get into the history. But it would have removed all of those temporary facilities, put them in their permanent, put the new facilities in their permanent locations where they were planned to be. And they were in the process of doing that when they were hit with a shocking notice of violation that, from Peak's perspective, kind of came out of nowhere, because we had the pending zoning clearance that was going to resolve all of these issues. So immediately after Peak received the notice of violation, it had to appeal to preserve its rights, but, but Peak's main purpose was to resolve it and to be able to move forward with its development. And it's worth noting this line from the introduction, from Peak's notice of violation, which I'll quote for you. This is from the introduction of the very first appeal that was submitted. Quote, "Peak intends to fully cooperate with the Planning Division staff to arrive at a mutually agreed compliance agreement, and would prefer to engage cooperatively with the Planning Division staff to arrive at a solution that would benefit all parties rather than engage in adversarial proceedings. With that said, appellate submits the following information for the use of the county staff in analyzing the case." And then the appeal goes on to explain the history of the temporary facilities, which I'll get into in a moment. It's also worth noting this statement from the conclusion of that same appeal. Although Peak disagrees, this is a quote, "that any of the alleged violations are accurate or applicable, Peak's goal is to move forward with the development of the property in its final form, which necessarily includes the removal and replacement of all temporary facilities into their final approved location. Though Peak's position that the approval of ZC 17 would be the easiest path to resolve any and all issues raised by the notice of violation, Peak is also open to negotiating a mutually agreeable compliance agreement that would attain the same goal. We respectfully request your expedient consideration of this appeal and look forward to working with you toward a mutually agreeable compliance agreement. The notice of violation also discusses the option of a, quote, informal office hearing. Peak is open to this option, but it is unclear whether such an informal hearing will be necessary, given Peak's desire to cooperatively work with the county in connection with a mutually agreeable compliance agreement or updated zoning clearance approval." Those were just direct quotes from, from our submittals, when we, when Peak was shocked to have received this notice of violation when it was in the middle of a legal process to get everything in its final location. So in this context, Peak submitted a compliance agreement. By the way, the compliance agreement was not Peak's idea, it was suggested by Planning Division staff. It requested an informal hearing, it requested office meetings, and it even submitted as-built plans to rectify any minor discrepancies with the plans that were previously submitted. Yet rather than process any of the above, or even agree to meet, meet with Peak to further discuss those items, Peak's fees for the informal office meeting were returned, the meeting was rejected, and the county went forward with a procedurally improper notice of nullification. So now let's dive into the history of how we got to where we are today, which is completely missing from anything that you've heard. So unless you've read Peak's actual appeals, this, this may be new information. So Peak purchased the minerals leased for the property in June 2012. It was approved for a zoning clearance to drill 24 wells at the property. And the, the, Peak originally started with nine wells, and this is common in the industry to start with, if you get approved for a larger number, you first need to drill a number of wells that would give you an idea of the economic viability of the drilling, and if it's not economically viable, it may not go forward. So they started with nine wells. And the balance of the 15 wells that were, had already been approved, weren't done at that time, it was just kind of a, a trial period. So this was to, to monitor early performance and to prove commercial viability. And the, what happened at that time is that the room was left in the northern side of the pad to be able to develop the full scope of ZC 2012, which approved the 24 wells. But temporary facilities were installed to test the viability, the economic viability of the, of the, of the development. All, and, and I need to make this absolutely clear, all temporary facilities were also permitted by the relevant agencies. So DOGAR, which is the Division of Oil and Gas and Geothermal Resources, approved all of these. Also, APCD, Ventura County's own Air Pollution Control District, approved all of these. So everything that we're talking about in terms of even the temporary facilities were approved and permitted. And even when Peak was, went to the county and, and at the planning counter, and this is all outlined in our appeals, but they met with planning staff and said, "Look, we have these temporary facilities. Do we need permits for these? No, you don't need any permits until you get your final approvals pursuant to the ZC 12." That's what Peak was told at the time. So it's not that they just abandoned any notion that they needed to get approvals. They got approval from DOGAR, they got approval from Air Pollution Control District, they went to the county to see if they needed further approvals, and the answer was no, very clearly. I have not had a chance, I should note, to read exhibit 25, which must have been posted less than 24 hours ago. I, so I don't know what that says exactly yet, and, and the response, but what I can tell you right now is if, if the, if the position has changed from the clear direction that Peak got at the time, then it's changed. But at the time, that was the answer that was received. So let's move on. After these nine wells were drilled, there was a huge hit on the oil industry economy between 2014 to 2017. So the original plans to develop the full 24 wells had to be put on hold. And Peak, through significant expense of its own and its investors, we're talking tens of millions of dollars, kept the, the drilling afloat while weathering the storm of the economic downturn. So in 2015, Peak was considering additional drilling of wells. Again, certain, the, the ZC 12 was renewed at that time in 2015, and two of the CUPs that were subject to the drilling were also merged at that time. It's, it's a little bit of a technical issue, but Peak obtained an over-the-counter approval of zoning clearance 15, which was a renewal of zoning clearance 12, which, because zoning clearances only last technically for a year, and staff has changed its position over time on whether or not zoning clearance 12 is still active or whether it has been expired. And so with that, at the time, before, in 2015, Peak was told that no zoning clearance 2012, even though you, you have 24 wells approved and you've only drilled nine of them, you need to get a new zoning clearance to be able to drill the whole 24 wells. So that's why they renewed in 2015. So finally, when the, when the economy recovered, and especially, I'm talking about the oil price economy, that which is kind of on a parallel path with the overall economy of, of the country or the, the state, that's when Peak started to process ZC 2017. And Commissioner King, this should go to some of the questions that you were asking about, you know, why is, why is Peak even asking for an approval of ZC 17? So in 2017, the, the economic conditions recovered to the point where Peak was able to continue its scope of work and fully develop the property as it had always planned to do. And during this time, it was still using the, the temporary facilities for those three years to, to weather the storm until it was ready to fully develop. Now, Peak has documentation, substantive documentation regarding its efforts from the years of 2013 to 2017 during this economic downturn period, in support of planning for and implementing the final scope of work that was envisioned in ZC 12. And this included, you know, millions of dollars of payment to, to procure the planned permanent tanks, the engineering for those tanks, the permitting and installation of permanent fuel gas line. So Peak expended considerable amount of time, money, and energy in processing on a parallel path as it was, as it was weathering that economic storm to, to be able to build the permanent facilities once the economy turned around. And that's exactly what happened. So in 2017, when economic conditions finally improved, Peak attempted to process the applications that would remove all the temporary facilities, and it would ramp up the permanent facilities, but it was blocked by the county at every turn. So that's what ended up happening, is that once Peak got to the position where it was ready to continue the development pursuant to the original approvals, and, you know, further development that was all pursuant to the original CUP, that's when it was blocked and, and it was delayed at every turn. So it's, it's probably worth getting into the new, let me explain the number of wells that were proposed in 2017 and ZC 17. So there's a lot of county documents out there that say, you know, 79 new wells. That's actually not the case. 79 is the total number of wells that was proposed through ZC 17. 24 of those had already been approved through ZC 12. Only nine had been drilled at the time of the 2017 submittal of ZC 17, and six were subsequently also drilled with county approval. But it's a misnomer that, that there's seven, an application for 79 new wells. That's, that's really not true. It's really, depending on how you look at it, it's either 64 wells or 55 new wells that weren't already approved through ZC 12. And the scope of work of, of ZC 17 clearly included all the removal of the temporary facilities and replacement of those facilities with permanent facilities. Now, Peak was ready to remove all the temporary facilities. As soon as this was submitted, it just didn't have the approval from the county to move forward. And as this was in process, much to Peak's surprise, after, and by the way, there were two inspections, as was noted by Ms. Luke, there were two inspections that happened at the property. One of them was right in the middle of when Peak was drilling those six additional wells that I just mentioned, and nobody mentioned any problems. One of the, one of the wells was actually being drilled already, and through, and the other five wells were already marked in their locations. Peak didn't hear anything about that until almost a year later when the notice of violation was issued. And again, all of these things, and I should get into this because this addresses one of the points that, that Ms. Luke raised. All of the permanent facilities are not only within the 100-foot setback, which Peak, from Peak's perspective, isn't even applicable to this property, but no matter how you look at it, the permanent facilities that are on the site, the wells that are drilled and everything, they are all within the scope of the, the pad that was approved by the county. The only thing that we're talking about that's not within that pad's scope and that's not within what was already approved are these temporary facilities, which Peach, Peak has been trying to remove since 2017, but just hasn't been allowed to do so from the county because it doesn't have these approvals to move forward. because it doesn't have these approvals to move forward. So let's go into what happened next. So the NOV and the notice of nullification take issue with the temporary facilities at the property. Peak has always planned to remove and replace those with the facilities in their final locations. The only exception to that is one, yes, Commissioner Rod?
You said something just a minute ago. And just need clarification. You mentioned that all the wells that had just been built or drilled are within the approved pad.
Correct.
Talking of three and a half acre or the nine acres?
Within the three and a half acre pad that was approved by ZC 12.
We're not talking about the entire nine and a half acres?
That's correct. So the only thing that you'll see in the slides that Ms. Luke showed are temporary facilities that are outside of that pad, but all the permanent facilities are within that area.
Thank you.
Yes. There's one minor exception to this, which I should get into, and it responds to one of Ms. Luke's issues. So the six wells that were drilled after the original nine, and again, this was when planning staff had been there, building and safety staff had been there and seen where these six wells were proposed. So all of the wells were supposed to be on the western edge of the property. Now, there was a 42-inch pipeline that was found underneath that western edge. So those six wells that were supposed to be along that side of that well were moved a little bit to the right. And that was, again, it was approved by Dogger. It was approved by the Air Pollution Control District. And Peak's plan was to submit an as-built plan after the fact, which is common in land use, to submit an as-built plan to show these minor deviations. And so that's the only permanent facility that was a minor deviation from what was approved in ZC 12. So everything else is the temporary facilities. So thus far, Peak has attempted to move forward with the development of the property in the following ways. First, it requested to complete the original planned work scope under ZC 12, including the removal of the temporary facilities, but this idea was rejected by the county. It submitted ZC 17, which included the removal of all the temporary facilities and installation of facilities in their permanent locations. Now, ZC 17, and I understand the confusion because it's a confusing concept. It's not before you technically right now, but the reason why it's part of the request is because approval, Peak needs some sort of approval to be able to continue its development and be able to absolve the violations that have been alleged by the county, right? Even though we disagree that there's any violations because these are all temporary facilities anyway. But if we want to be able to remove those temporary facilities and put the permanent facilities in, Peak still needs some sort of approval from the county to do that. That's why ZC 17 is suggested as a mechanism by which the approvals can actually be granted and the temporary facilities removed. And also, a compliance agreement was submitted in April 2019, which again, hasn't been processed by the county. Peak has followed up several times. It's been ignored. In other words, the continued presence of the temporary facilities at the property is not due to Peak's inaction. It's not due to any issues under Peak's control. It is due to the county's inaction. The county's failure to approve any of the three courses of action which I just laid out. Continued approval of ZC 12, approval of ZC 17, approval of a compliance agreement. None of those were considered by the county. Instead, they just ignored those, issued a notice of violation shortly thereafter, issued a notice of nullification. So any one of the solutions proposed by Peak would have resolved all of the issues that are before you today. If it would have fully abated all of the violations from the NOV, and there's the exception that I mentioned with those six wells that had to be moved a little bit to the east due to the pipeline that was below. So in a surprising turn of events, in April 2019, the county issued the notice of nullification. And that acts to nullify the zoning clearance 2012. So despite what staff has mentioned regarding, well, once you appeal a nullification, then you're allowed to continue drilling, the county has even confirmed in writing subsequent to that that if you would have continued, it would have been at Peak's own risk because to the extent that the appeals are not granted, you are in violation for that entire time. And also, the letter itself, the notice of nullification itself, didn't say, you know, to the extent that you appeal, the nullification is stayed. It very explicitly stated that if you want to continue development on the site, you need a new zoning clearance to approve that. So what did Peak do in accordance with the county's instruction in the notice of nullification? It, very shortly after receiving the notice of nullification, submitted an as-built ZC, which is again, another item that's floating around there that the county hasn't acted on. In order to approve that, in order to continue development, that's also been ignored by the county. So the reality is, the county staff has always been aware of exactly what was going on with the temporary facilities. None of this stuff is a surprise to anybody. The property, the NOV, the notice of violation was simply a pretext. It was an excuse for the county to thwart the development of the site that was always envisioned, either the 24 wells or the fully developed 79 wells. So this was just an excuse. It was pretext because from the very beginning, when the notice of, sorry, when the ZC 17 was issued, it was understood. It was all clearly laid out, what the current status of the property is, what the plan for the property is. And just in the middle of that process, it was, Peak was hit with the notice of violation and nullification. So that's the context. And so I'm kind of done with that portion of it. And hopefully, that helps the planning commission understand the background of how we got where we are today. So now, I want to move on to the second part of my presentation just to address a couple of minor issues. I don't want to go too much into detail about the individual notices of violation except to say that pretty much everything that you saw up there on the screen regarding the notices of violation and the alleged violations are at the property would be resolved if Peak was just allowed to move forward with its original plan and if it wasn't delayed by the county at every turn. And so an NOV where the operator has attempted to, basically, every possible legal mechanism that was at its disposal, Peak attempted to move forward and wasn't allowed to do that. And now, it got hit with the notice of nullification. Now, moving on to the notice of nullification, the claim that is made by staff is that the ZC 12, and I'm quoting, was not in full, true, and correct form. The application did not accurately depict or describe the actual design and scope of Peak's intended development of the site, as evidenced by the numerous fundamental discrepancies between Peak's submitted plans and the facilities actually installed at the site. Now, this is a ridiculous statement. Peak's intended goal has always been, still is, to develop the property according to ZC 17, to fully develop the property as it always wanted to and ZC 12, which was submitted, which was the original 24. By the way, ZC 12 and ZC 17 are consistent. ZC 17 is just the renewed version, and it does expand the scope of what was originally approved in ZC 12. But these are just different mechanisms that Peak had used to try to resolve the issue. So the fact that Peak is, sorry, the county is now claiming that the ZCC 12, which was the original scope of work, was not in full, true, or correct form, is utterly false. There's, nothing can be further from the truth. Peak wants to continue. It had been weathering the economic downturn to get to that point, and it just wasn't allowed to do so by the county. So in conclusion, Peak has already suffered a considerable amount of monetary damages. I'm talking about in the hundreds of millions of dollars due to the county's legal, factual, and procedural errors in addressing the issues outlined above. If this result is upheld and the appeals are not overturned, the county's actions will have constituted a taking without just compensation, will have violated Peak's constitutional rights, such as the right to substantive and procedural due process. So that concludes my presentation for now. I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Jared?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Just as a point of order, Mr. Samimi mentioned that he has not had an opportunity to review, I believe, what he was Exhibit 25, which was a response to his letter that came in around 2:00 yesterday afternoon. So I might suggest if Mr. Samimi would like to be given the opportunity to review that letter and respond to it.
Do we have Exhibit 25 or? Also, when was it made available on the website, Megan? Not on the website yet? Okay. So, okay. Okay, are there any questions of the speaker at this time? Seeing none?
I have several.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry, Commissioner King. Go ahead.
Well, I have several, but I also have one for clarification of something he said. And I know that Dogger is not a county agency. It's a state agency.
Correct.
The question is, is APCD a department of the county or is it a freestanding agency?
It's a district, but it's related to the county. So it's part of the county.
I'm sorry, I missed that?
It's, the question was whether APCD was part of the county. And I said it's a district, but it's considered part of the county. Do you agree?
No.
No.
Yeah, no, it's a separate legal entity. And their permitting is completely separate than the planning divisions.
That's exactly what I wanted to know. Okay. You'll forgive me, but this is my first oil and gas case, so I need to get up to speed. So following up, can you tell me how you memorialized, or Peak memorialized, their intentions and communicated that to county staff at the time that these temporary facilities were placed on the site?
Commissioner, unfortunately, I don't have all the details of that. I was engaged much later down the line in this process after the ZC 17 had already been submitted and, you know, well after all of that. I was engaged late 2018. So I don't have the details of that. And I don't think, so the Peak representatives who are available today, the CEO of Peak Operator LLC just is recovering from surgery, and he's out of state right now. He's not able to be here. So I do know, I can just answer in very broad terms, that the zoning clearance 17 did outline the full scope. And there are back-and-forth email communications with some individuals. I don't know the full extent of what they cover. And also, there were oral communications with staff, both at the planning division and at the building department. But that's all I can tell you.
How many years after those quote temporary facilities were placed on the site, did you submit ZC 17 dash whatever it is?
So the temporary facilities were installed, they started at the end of 2013. They were installed through, I think, I don't know when the end of that was. It was definitely through 2014 and 15, I believe. So if you want to say from when they began operations, it would have been from 2013 through 2017. Or maybe it was as late as 2015 through 2017. But I don't have the exact details on that. And again, I apologize for not being 100% in the know of all the facts.
Okay. You indicated that if zoning clearance 17 was approved or the compliance agreement was approved, I'm not sure I'm using the right terms, but that all of these non-conforming structures would be removed? When in relationship to additional development were you intending to remove those temporary facilities? In advance of any additional development or subsequent to some part of the development?
Neither. It would have been kind of a, once the approvals were granted, it would have been, you know, you have to remove those temporary facilities in order to put the final permanent facilities in. So it would have been a plan that was all kind of done together at the same time. As part, you know, it gets phased. But clearly, you know, one would have to be removed for the permanent ones to be installed. And I should clarify something. Some of the, you know, the conditions have changed to the extent that economic viability is back into play now. And anything less than the approval of ZC 17 with a full proposed development of the site is not even going to, may not be economically viable. I mean, Peaks would still need to figure that out at the time. So the reason why Peak has requested the approval of ZC 17 is because that is pretty much the only viable path forward for Peak.
Okay. In your comments, you said that the county has always been aware of the temporary facilities since, I think we've established that neither Dogger or APCD is actually the county. How did the county, and I'm thinking particularly of planning department, resource management, how did the county receive notification of these quote temporary structures? And when?
So at a minimum, it would have been in 2017 when the ZC 17 was submitted, at a minimum.
So four years after they were placed?
But I would have to defer to the client. And again, the person who would know the answers to this kind of stuff isn't here today. But from my understanding is that this was kind of a fluid back-and-forth with the planning division. But I don't know the exact answer to that question.
Okay. And then finally, how do you define a minor mod versus a major mod? When you refer to all these temporary facilities as a minor mod?
Interestingly enough, Ms. Luke mentioned that, you know, if there's a pipeline that's out of place and whatnot, that would be a minor modification. The moving, and this wasn't even, you know, if Peak would have been allowed to drill the six wells that were along the western side of the property, it would have. That was its plan. It was told when it tried to get those approvals that there's this 42-inch pipeline below it, and so it was forced to move it over. And it was always Peak's intention to go forward and get everything processed legally. And again, the planning division and the building department staff in April 2018, while these six wells were being drilled and were already placed, was on-site and didn't mention anything about that issue. And the notice of violation wasn't even received until about a year later and the following year in January.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the speaker? Commissioner Way?
Yeah, I have one question. I went by there yesterday, and it's all fenced in and the gate locked and nothing happening. The only thing I saw was some security lights on. How long has that facility been shut down?
Ever since the notice of nullification was issued, which was in April of this year. Peak, you know, in accordance with the county's instruction, you know, stopped.
It was operating up until April?
Do you know the answer to that?
I'm sorry, we can't have testimony. Go ahead and introduce yourself at the mic, and then you can answer the question. These proceedings are recorded, and we won't pick you up if you speak from the audience. Thank you.
I'm Michael Corey. I'm the CEO of the holding company, Peak Oil Holdings. So I'm not an oil person, and I'm not the head of the operator. The, I can answer only certain questions. Specifically, the notice of violation was issued on April 23. The notice of nullification, sorry, was issued on April 23. Once we received that, in accordance with that notice of nullification, we proceeded to shut down our production and our facilities in an orderly fashion. And by the beginning or middle of May, we were completely shut down.
That's your only question? Thank you, sir. I propose we give the appellant the chance to review the response regarding this Exhibit 25, that he has a chance to read it. 25, that he has a chance to read it and respond to it if he wishes. So let's take, let's say, five minutes? Would that be sufficient? 10 minutes?
I see that Mr. Samimi has given me the thumbs up that he thinks that's a sufficient time, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's come back at, in about five minutes. Let's take a break. Representative is back in the room. Thank you. And I would
Since there are no, usually the public comments are oral, since there aren't them, but you've received a statement, I think it would be fair to give that to Peak to take a look at and see if they want to respond to that as well.
The statement card?
Yeah. And I have no idea what it is, but.
May I read it out loud? "They support the recommended action, which is to deny." And the comment is "high crimes and misdemeanors by an oil company that should never be allowed to operate again in Ventura County. They give the industry a bad name." Is that sufficient?
Do you want to respond to that now? Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any response to some of the arguments or some of the point of view that was shared with us?
Just very briefly, staff would like to clarify one or two points specifically on several occasions. Mr. Samimi referenced that staff's site visit in April 2018, that staff members did make no comment regarding the fact that they were drilling additional wells, not in the locations that were approved under ZC-12. This is not uncommon. Staff does not go to sites, particularly where there's a potential violation in effect, and, you know, engage actively in discussing or debating whether or not a violation is taking place. We're there to document and obtain confirmation. And then we take that back and confirm whether or not it's matching what we have on plans or if there's anything else that's been raised. So, just to clarify, that that's not something that we would have gone and then attempted to debate or take issue with during a site visit. Secondly, one other point of clarification is that the, let's see if I can pull it up for you. Nope, apparently in the wrong direction. Give up. The temperature observation wells.
Just a moment. Could we get that back up, please?
I failed on my PowerPoint.
Hold on just a second.
This slide shows you the approved and as-built drilling pads. As Peak's representative stated, he said that all of the wells that were drilled, he is correct in stating that they were all drilled and all of the wells currently in place within the main drilling pad lie within the overall footprint, the yellow area on the left-hand side of the screen. However, the observation wells, there are four wells that were in place. You see the two pink patches of .1 acre, just to the left of Revelon Slough, and the other pink area drilling pad has two other additional observation wells. So, there were wells that were placed well outside the approved footprint overall, in addition to being located, what we would say, well outside of substantial conformance with the approved plans.
And is this something you ordinarily see, in the development of these types of facilities?
No. This is not common. And it is the extent to which development was offset or moved, the discussion regarding the pipeline that was found and needing to offset some of the wells from where they were shown, would be something that, A, should have been brought back to the Planning Division for a re-review of. Additionally, zoning clearance applications clearly state that you should show all easements and areas that would preclude development on your site plan. So if there was an easement that precluded your development within that area, that should have already been outlined within the site plan as part of the proposal.
Thank you. Okay, I'm looking to see if my fellow commissioners have any further questions. Commissioner Rodriguez?
I have a question on the increase, the increase in the pad from three and a half to nine and a half acres, additional three, six acres, I guess, beyond what was approved. That was identified as prime ag land and under, how's that impacted?
That's a good question, Commissioner Rodriguez. Overall, the area, the, on this slide, you can see the area to the left of Revelon Slough is held under one land contract. There is a separate Land Conservation Act contract for the portion of property that is to the right of Revelon Slough. These both do have large acreage, and the amount of acreage overall that has been removed in total does not affect the validity of those Land Conservation Act contracts. However, the AE zoning that applies to these parcels does recognize that agriculture is of prime importance and that these are prime ag lands that development that would conflict with the retention or ability for those lands to be used and held for agriculture would make development not potentially compatible. And that's why that zoning exists in our ordinance.
Okay. What's the, you mentioned, we talked about setbacks. What's the setback requirement for the slough? Is there setbacks on either side of it?
Yes. 100 feet.
Okay.
And the temperature observation wells are just over 100 feet from the slough.
Okay.
So those do meet the applicable setbacks that would be in place for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Then I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I recommend, following the staff recommendation on this item.
I second that.
Is there any discussion before we vote? Then let's vote.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
You know, it seems like, you know, and these things, these leases, this particular lease has history, obviously. It's, the text reports tell us, we go back 70-ish years, 70-plus years. And at a time where these issues have been dealt with more ministerially as opposed to the way they are now, the new ones, the new CUP's discretionary. And more so today, you know, there's more and more need to look at the environmental impact this is having on the surrounding area, not just ag. We've got the aquifer below this particular site. And that's, you know, that's something to consider down the road, obviously. But what I was going to say is the, the, I assume, you know, we're dealing with professionals in their field doing what they're doing and applying for permits and understanding what's required, et cetera. But beyond that, it doesn't seem like there's continuation of that communication with those that have to provide the permission to move forward. And, you know, not staying, not being completely in tune with what planning requires and what planning prohibits. Having a clear understanding of what setbacks are and what the setbacks requirements are as they apply to this permit in particular. And I realize, you know, this operator's inherited this property and with what was there previously. But it seems, and I appreciate the fact that they offer to get into a compliance meeting with the county. It almost sounds like an afterthought to what really needs to be done in the first place. So, anyway, for a variety of reasons, that's why I am voting against you.
Do you want to add to that, Commissioner King?
Yes, just to draw a bridge between where my vote will be on the motion and all of the testimony and questions. I would just say that there's a reason why we have zoning ordinances. And they're to memorialize and document what a project intends to do. And neither staff nor the commission can be expected to read minds. So, I just haven't seen any evidence that was presented, aside from verbal assertions, that would support the appeal.
And I agree with you wholeheartedly. Commissioner King?
Yes, I agree with what the three of you have said. We have the zoning ordinance that, not only for oil and gas operations, but for many kinds of development. And these are the laws, the rules by which people must comply with. And when the county staff identifies that an operator has violated the laws and issues, notices a violation and nullifies zoning clearances with explanations and justification, I think it's incumbent upon the Planning Commission to back up the county staff. It's so important for operators in Ventura County to comply with the law and the zoning ordinance.
Okay. That being said, we have a motion on the floor and a second. So we're just waiting for our screen.
For yes is to uphold staff recommendations?
The motion is to approve staff's recommendations. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the County Council presentation regarding Planning Commission decorum.
What's that?
Thank you, Bonnie.
I'm leaving in two weeks. I'm leaving in two weeks.
I'm sorry, we're continuing on with our meeting. Thanks so much. Appreciate your participation. Mr. Barnes?
Good morning, Chair Dukas, members of the commission. I'm not used to standing down here. Jeff Barnes, County Council's office.
I think it's better you do that than us going down there.
Or training your necks over to the side.
Okay.
Yeah. So this, I'm providing a presentation in response to your commission's request about how to effectively maintain decorum at commission meetings. And it was a good request, and so I prepared a, it's a pretty short PowerPoint, but please feel free to interrupt me with questions at any point. And so, I'll just dive right into it.
Is this available to us online or can we get a, yeah, we can? Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, the first question or point is, you know, rules of decorum, what are they, what are they for? Rules of decorum are intended to ensure that a public meeting proceeds in a civil and orderly manner. And the rules are important because their whole purpose is to create an atmosphere conducive to civil debate where all speakers feel welcome to state their opinions and beliefs. And as your commission is aware, you know, people have very strong feelings about land use matters, and that's understandable. But, you know, I would say our democracy depends on everyone's ability to have a safe space where they can air their opinions and beliefs without being scared for their safety, number one, and also without feeling intimidated or having their speech chilled by people with other opinions and beliefs. And so, rules of decorum are important to maintain that civil environment and, you know, like I said, create a safe space for everyone to have their say on these important matters that your commission deals with. So a little legal context for rules of decorum. I'm sure you're all familiar with California's Brown Act, which addresses or mandates requirements regarding public meetings, how they're noticed, how they're conducted. And so, one provision of the Brown Act, which is obviously very important, states that public speakers have a right to address any item of interest on the agenda within the agency's subject matter jurisdiction. And so, in terms of your commission, you know, there's general comments, period of time at the beginning of the meeting, but more important is, you know, the public comments that people make during land use hearings themselves. And so, that's, you know, the portion of the meeting that can get heated. And so, people have a statutory right to comment on those matters. That being said, the Brown Act authorizes public agencies to adopt reasonable regulations to ensure that the intent of the statute's public comment provisions is carried out. And so, that implicitly, you know, authorizes public agencies to have rules of decorum. It also authorizes speaker limits and other rules that kind of guide people's public commenting. And the flip side of that, and this should be obvious, is that the Brown Act says regulations cannot prohibit public criticism of public agencies' decisions or policies. And again, the whole point of public comment, not the whole point, but an obvious purpose in a democracy is to let citizens criticize what the government's doing or, you know, potential decisions before a commission or, you know, staff's presentation. And that's just all part of the process. So, your commission by now has a pretty thick skin, and that's pretty much required of a public official, because criticism is part of the job and we have to allow it. So then there's the First Amendment. And so, again, it's probably pretty obvious, but it bears repeating that public speakers have a First Amendment right to state their opinions, including by criticizing public agencies and officials at public meetings. But here's a big distinction, and this is kind of at the core of the presentation and this issue. The First Amendment does not allow conduct that legitimately disrupts a public meeting. And so, I put in the word legitimately there because that's a critical term. And so, in terms of the First Amendment, the First Amendment protects content of speech. And again, just because a public official doesn't like being criticized, you know, doesn't mean it's, the public official can call that a disruption. Criticism is part of the job, but if you have someone making threats of violence, or if you have people in the audience clapping and booing and potentially intimidating other speakers, that's not, that may not be protected by the First Amendment. It probably isn't, because the issues that we would have with those types of conduct isn't the content of the speech, it's the fact that they're disrupting a public meeting in meeting and interfering with the whole concept of creating a safe space for people to engage in public comment. And so, um, you know, I have some experience with, you know, again, legitimately disrupts. I, I previously worked in, um, in the city of Santa Cruz for the city attorney's office, and I actually had an interesting case that went to federal court. And just to give you an example of how complicated these issues can be, um, there was a situation there where, um, there were, were several members of the public who took a lot of actions to, um, potentially disrupt the meeting. They, they, for instance, they would, they would march around the room while people were speaking, they would hold up signs in the back, and they basically were creating kind of a circus atmosphere because they didn't like a lot of things that the city council was doing. And then on top of all that, and so that, that kind of happened over a period of time over, you know, a few meetings. And then that kind of culminated, at, at one point, the, kind of the ringleader of that went up to the, um, was at this, this podium where I am, and he, he did a Heil Hitler salute to, to the council, and he was accusing the, the city council of being fascist. And so he, you know, he accused him of being fascist. And so then at point, at that point, one of the council members who was already, with good reason, frustrated with all the antics going on, um, told the, the, the chair to, to have this guy ejected by the, um, the police who were in the back. And so then he was ejected and it turned into a First Amendment federal lawsuit. And so then the issue, and it was an interesting issue, but again, this is just to show you the nuance. So the, the city won, got the case dismissed, but the, the federal judge first said, of course it was disruptive. When you look at the totality and all the marching around and all the antics, um, the individual's argument was my, the, the council didn't like my Nazi salute, they didn't like me accusing them of being fascist. And so then that went up to the Ninth Circuit, our motion to dismiss, the Ninth Circuit said, no, that's a triable issue. And the issue was, was it a legitimate disruption? Or did this one city council member overreact for being criticized for being called a fascist? So it actually went to trial and it took, it was a huge, you know, it took a lot of time on everyone's behalf. The city finally prevailed. But the reason I'm saying this, A, telling you this is, A, it can be a nuance issue and, and B, to the extent possible, it's better to err in letting people speak, letting people criticize the government, but also knowing when to draw the line. And it can be difficult, I'm not going to pretend that it's not. But the legitimately is, that could be a factual issue that the courts need, need to work out. So it's, it can be super complicated. But that's the line. Is it free speech or is it disruption? We can regulate disruption, we can stop disruption, we can't stop free speech and garden variety criticism. So I, I don't have all the parameters or answers, but that's where the line is drawn. So, you know, as I kind of already commented on the last bullet point, public agencies have the authority to address disruptive con, um, conduct under both state civil and criminal And so, um, this, uh, again, I'm thinking of commission for, you know, requesting this presentation and, and flagging this issue for us. When, when I was preparing the presentation, um, I realized that the Board of Supervisors' standard agenda includes, uh, this very good language on its, um, agenda form. And so we are going to migrate this language to the Planning Commission's standard agenda form. And so this language basically serves as the, the county's rules of decorum. And, you know, I reviewed it and it's, it's legally excellent. So maybe just read it. "To maintain a public meeting environment conducive and welcoming to receiving public comments from all members of the public, the audience is discouraged from engaging in displays of support or opposition to staff reports or public comments, including clapping, booing, hissing, and cheering, that may create a disruptive or intimidating environment for members of the public wishing to participate." So, um, it's, it's laying down the rules, it's saying you can comment, but we don't want this to turn into like a sporting event. It's, this isn't a sporting event, this is somewhere people come, say their piece and sit back down. And so then here's, here's the follow-up. "Any person who disrupts a meeting will be instructed to cease the disruptive comment. Failure to do so may result in that person being removed from the meeting." And so, um, you, you, your commission has, uh, and just the next slide, so as a presiding officer of, of the meeting, the chair of the Planning Commission is responsible for enforcing the rules of decorum at the Planning Commission meetings. And so, um, what I was going to say before is that the, um, your, your commissions, the, the chair of your commission has done a good job in the past and the chair of the Board of Supervisors has done a good job of, um, explaining the rules of decorum. And again, we're going to get those rules onto the agenda. And so, um, let me go back to the next slide, I don't want to. Okay, so here's, here's where I'm going with this. The board and your commission has, has done a good job of, of doing this before. I think it'll be easier now once we migrate those, those rules onto your agenda. And so if there's a public hearing, and I'm not saying do this at every public hearing, but if the room's packed and, you know, people have signs in the back and it looks like people are ready to go, emotional issue, uh, it's a very good idea to, um, read the rules of decorum that I just read at the beginning of every contentious hearing, just to let people know what the rules are and to explain, like I keep saying, the whole point of this is to hear public comment. We need to have a, a safe space for people to not feel intimidated and, and make their comments. So read the rules. And then following up on that, each time the audience members, and usually it's, it's not just one person, it's, it's several people, it's been my experience, clap, cheer, hiss or boo, or otherwise engage in disruptive comment, remind the audience of the rules. And so it's basically, in the employment law context, it's called progressive discipline. You, uh, you know, maybe not obviously, but you shouldn't, you know, the first time people start cheering, you don't start throwing people out of the room. It just makes sense. You remind people politely, you know, please, you know, don't verbally cheer, boo, blah, blah, you get it. And so, you know, to the extent you have to, to repeat as needed, then repeat as needed. But the most important thing, and it's kind of like, um, maybe being a teacher in a classroom or controlling a situation, you want to stay on top of it. You don't want to let, let that kind of behavior go on and then kind of try to catch up with it. You want to try to nip it in the bud and stay on top of it. And even if it requires reminding people of the rules repeatedly. And so then, and I, I've seen the, uh, the chair of the board do this very effectively. And to the extent there has been an issue of kind of repeated quasi disruptions, this has worked. If people still are cheering and, and booing and, and whatnot, after a few reminders, then in, in my mind, a good next step was to say, okay, you're still doing it, you know, we need you to follow the rules of decorum. If this continues, I'm going to recess the meeting for 10 minutes or 15 minutes to give everyone a chance to cool down. And the last thing, and that's worked really well at the board, I think, because people don't want to, people already are frustrated they have to wait an hour before commenting. So the last thing they want to do is have to sit there for another 15 minutes before they get their say. And so that's, like I said, that's, that's been the extent of it that I've seen the, the board chair to, you know, to take to get people to calm down. So I would highly recommend that. If the, if that doesn't work, then, um, it's within the, the chair's legal right under the Brown Act to clear the room, basically tell everyone to leave the room based on a disruption. And at every step, you know, there's going to be county council to confer with, you're not on your own, we can talk about this. How to deal with situations as they evolve, but it's within the, the chair's legal right to clear the room and to, to have the rest of the hearing occur just with the parties and without the audience there. We do have to let Kathleen Molson stay because she's with the press. That's in the Brown Act, actually. But, so that's within, that's within, um, the legal right. We'd never, I've never seen anything come close to that, but it, just to throw it out there, that's an option. And so we actually did have this type of situation come up before. If you have a specific audience member who either continuously engages in disruptive comments or, uh, so it's a pattern and they're just not listening, or if it's just one instance, but it's, it's beyond the pale, like threatening violence, then the chair can order the person to leave the room. Before we come to that, uh, before ordering removal, it, we should definitely have a peace officer on hand, just in case the person, the person's going to be, obviously going to be riled up, or maybe not obviously, but there's a good chance. And so we should have a peace officer there.
How do we do that? How do we get a peace officer on hand?
Yeah, so, um, for the, there's two ways. One, and, and this would take some planning with the planning division before the meeting and RMA to request a peace officer to attend and, and that obviously requires coordinating with the sheriff's office, but we, we've been better at doing that. And so they are, he or she might already be there, but if, if they're not, and this is what we faced before, then it's a good idea to recess the meeting, um, and get, get them there and just kind of have them on standby. So we'll have to cross that bridge, but...
Well, we did cross that bridge.
Yeah.
The way that it was handled when we were told we should all be shot was I went to Kim during, I called for a break.
Right.
And I went to Kim and asked her to please have him removed. And so we stayed on break until he was removed.
Yeah.
It took some time.
It took some time.
So you call a recess and, and then make the request without ordering, before you order the person to leave?
Exactly. Yeah. And you don't, you, there's no reason to, and that's a good point, you don't have to announce from up there, oh yeah, I'm going to have, you know, this, this person ejected who just, you know, threatened the violence against me. You can just call a recess, just, this is, um, stay calm, that's going to be another bullet point, just call a recess, you don't have to tell people why, um, and then, and then get the peace officer there and, and deal with the situation. So, yeah, so it's, it's against the law, it's against criminal law to either, again, legitimately disrupt a meeting, and also it's against the law to refuse an order to leave a meeting based on a legitimate disruptive. So, um, so the law is on, is on our side, again, assuming it's a legitimate disruption to have the person removed. And so then this is just kind of a summary, this is the last slide. At the beginning of contentious hearings, read the audience the rules of decorum, uh, again, consistently admonish the audience to such, stop cheering, booing, et cetera. Enforce rules without regard to persons' positions on the issues. And don't interrupt or attempt to prohibit criticism of public officials. Just let people have their say. Again, unless they're doing something like threatening violence, but even then, if they're all riled up, and this is what happened before, Chair Dukas, I think you did a good job, just no need to jump in and, you know, eh, you know, escalate the situation, oh my God, you know, you just threatened violence and, oh my God. Just let them have their say, call a recess, get support, so you handled it really well. And that's definitely, you know, the right thing to do. And yeah, recess the meeting to address repeated disruptions. Again, if it's everyone, a lot of people hissing and booing, just kind of call a timeout and say, tell people they have to wait and simmer down, um, before we continue the hearing and/or get peace officer support. And then again, this is absolutely critical, is to maintain composure on the dyes. And that's, you know, for, the, the Santa Cruz example I, I gave, um, and it's, it's 2020 hindsight, right? But that was one thing that I thought that city council could have done better, is keep their composure while, while this went on. And yeah, it was super insulting, obviously, to have, to have the Nazi salute and all that, but it's better to, but then that kind of fed into it also, because then it kind of turned into more of a circus, the way the council members said, oh my gosh, we get out of here. And it's like, no, just keep, keep composed. And, um, so anyways, that's, uh, that's it. Do you have any questions for me? Like I said, we are going to migrate the rules of decorum into the, um, agenda, so we'll have those ready to go for the next contentious hearing.
I've, I've, I've watched Steve Bennett follow that procedure of maintaining decorum, um, where he threatened to throw everybody out and have them speak one at a time. And I thought, you can do that? I wished, I knew that. I do have one question, because I'm the person who requested this. Is it free speech to say you should all be taken out and shot? Is that something that we are expect, is that their legitimate, you know, First Amendment right to express the opinion that we should be shot?
No.
Because I, I felt threatened. I felt threatened in that room. I felt threatened by other members of the audience, the whole mood of the, um, the people who were still there. And, um, it wasn't so much the speaker as someone else who, um, was behind him and in support and clapping and laughing that, uh, that made me feel very threatened by it. Is this something that we just, um, need to expect that people get to say something like that?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a really good question. And I guess a, a couple of observations. No, it's, it's not First Amendment protected to threaten to shoot somebody. That's, um, violating the whole concept of having a safe space by, um, just flat out saying that people who don't agree with me should be, should be shot and presumably killed. That's obviously, in my mind, a disruption because you're violating the safe space. What's, what's a little bit trickier, and that's why these situations are so hard to, to deal with, is, um, kind of combining what this, you know, one person making a threat does with someone in the back kind of clapping and laughing, because I saw that too. And I don't think you can assume that they were, um, had some kind of conspiracy going or they even knew each other. Maybe the person just didn't like the way that he saw the county going with this and he's like, oh yeah, good for you, you know, it's just like, uh, watching TV, but, you know, not really thinking about how serious it was. And so that's where it's, it's hard, that you have to try to maintain your composure and, and deal with one thing at a time. Because I, I, I think it would have been problematic to start trying to remove people who were clapping for the person who had made the threat. So that, that was my, and I could be wrong, but that's why you have to be really careful. Because like I said, I, I've been to a, a trial on this and that would really be scrutiny. You have to look at each individual, because if you threw the other guy out, then he'd say, hey, I didn't know that guy. All I was doing was clapping and other people were too, so what's, you know, your issue with me? I wasn't disrupting anything. And so that's why it's just like, you know what? Have to be really deliberate and cross one bridge at a time. And, and we, you know, we handled it well, we focused on the person who actually for sure was disrupting and didn't take it any broader than that. So it's...
The, the other thing I, um, noticed that you said that pricked up my ears was, um, having to get on it quickly. You said it's kind of like being a teacher, and I know that that's, um, Supervisor Bennett's background too, but there's also the notion of planned ignoring, where you just keep on moving on and you ignore the shenanigans and not, you know, get played. So, um, that to me is like another fine judgment of whoever is, um, chairing the meeting, uh, that they not be distracted by, um, some things, you know, are almost involuntary where, where somebody laughs or claps or groans or, you know, a titter runs through the room, whatever. You can, you can ignore some of it. This, um, I, I've been a planning commissioner here for more than 16 years, and it was the first time that we had anything coming anywhere close to that. And I was here during the Omens and Ranch hearings where, I mean, I was on the other side and knew the role of the disruptor. And, um, uh, there was nothing, uh, even remotely close to that. And given today's, you know, there was a shooting just now at, at Saugus High School, um, and, and there were children dead. This is something that's ongoing, it happens every day in this country. So I feel like it's, it's really serious. This, uh, feeling a certain way and, and saying it are, are different. And then of course, acting on it is, is a whole other thing. I just wanted to make sure that... And then, of course, acting on it is, is a whole other thing. I just wanted to make sure that we had guidance that what we do is legal and proper and fair.
Right. And yeah, no, thank you. I agree with everything you said. And I agree that the Wildlife Corridor Ordinance Hearing was the, was the ugliest that I've seen. And I also agree, it's definitely a judgment call, because there's been other hearings where people sporadically clap. And so I'm not saying call those people out all the time, but I mean, you, you, you have really good judgment. And it's, the, the only risk of not doing anything and just hoping it'll, it'll end is it, it, it could be harder to stop once it starts. And then you could be opening yourself up to taking sides. But it's, yeah, a judgment call, and you don't have to, yeah, admonish people every, every time there's a little clap, so.
Yeah, fairness is like
Exactly.
the most important thing, I think, to all of us. Yeah. Thank you.
Of course, yeah. Thank you all for your service. It's, yeah, we really appreciate it.
Did, did you want to say anything?
Uh, no, not really. Well, just make a general comment. It impacts me directly. The comment about the threats that were made on me during the meeting that day. I didn't, unfortunately, because of my previous occupation, you know, I heard it, but it didn't register with me the way it registered with Commissioner Rodriguez at that time. In retrospect afterwards, I realized the impact it had. And unfortunately, that's, you know, one of the, the scars of my previous profession. It's, I've heard it many times. And, and I don't discount the fact somebody might say that and actually want to do it. And just segueing a little further with Nora's comments. Unfortunately, you know, public hearings are becoming a flashpoint in some cases. And so it's important to stay and try to stay in control of the, of the meeting. So.
Well, I remember seeking your opinion because I respect your experience with risk assessment. Is this person a risk? And, and, you know, I.
Well, and at the time, obviously, he was, we called the recess immediately and he started to move away. I think before you and I talked. But certainly, certainly, I would have, I would hope, I would have paid more attention to it if he, if he'd continued, and I would have said something to you, to you. And so we could have stopped something. The other, the other thing is, without a recess, there's no magic button underneath the dais that I'm aware of that would light, light up across, across the next building saying, we need some help over here. A recess is a proper thing to do. And it may take a few minutes, because there's no one sitting there waiting to respond.
Exactly. And just, follow up on you, Commissioner Rodriguez. I mean, it was a wake-up call for me too, because I was kind of in the same boat that you were. It's like, yeah, been, done doing this for a while. And, and part of me is like, oh yeah, I have a thick skin, you know, you know, no big deal. But the, the proper way to look at something like that, and again, 2020 hindsight, but going forward, is not whether this was a legitimate threat of violence. It's whether it was intimidating and it violated the safe space for civil debate.
I, I found it very disruptive.
Exactly. So that's.
I was like, stop.
That's the standard. We don't, yeah, we don't have to find, you know, we, we don't have to wait until someone's, we're, you know, 51% sure that someone's actually going to shoot somebody to throw them out, to have them removed. It's, you know, are they violating the safe space? Are they making comments that are intimidating? And when you threaten violence, in my mind, that's always going to be the case, even if it's a veiled threat. So that has no, no place in, you know, civil, civil discourse. And so that's, that's the test, not is this a legitimate, you know, threat of violence that may be carried out?
Just, just an aside, as far as setting up a procedure, should that issue ever come to pass. You want to make contact with Sheriff's Administration to see what their protocol is, make sure they have a protocol to respond to, whether it's a board or commissioner, some other need in this, this complex for assistance. Because if there isn't, then I don't know that there is. I would have hoped there is, but I don't know that. Otherwise, it goes, you know, it goes to whoever answers the call. And they'll put it out to whoever is out there, or they'll pass it on to somebody that can address it. And if there's a protocol in place that everybody should be familiar with over at the Sheriff's Department, that's in, in the patrol operations certainly, then the response should be automatic.
I agree, and that's something.
Take a priority.
Yeah, and that's something, you know, like I said, the, the last few potentially contentious hearings, there, there was a sheriff's deputy assigned, but I'm not sure if there's a process for that. And, and I completely agree with what, what you're saying. Okay, let's say there's not one there. Do we have a process where we tell the sheriff that we're having a meeting and just, so they can get here quicker next time? And yeah, so what's a protocol? So that's definitely worth following up on, because I don't know if there is one.
Well, I, I know with regard to that particular instance and that matter, there was a lot of work done to make sure that that didn't happen to the board of supervisors, because that's where, you know, the simmer could come to a full boil.
Yeah, for that, exactly. For that, for that hearing, there was a lot of work. But I agree with Commissioner Rodriguez that there should really be a broader protocol to, if we need to get peace officer support here, to get that done quicker next time.
Commissioners, I, I will follow up on that. My experience in other cities that I've worked in too, had some process and procedures and things that we were able to also share with commissioners or other boards and commissions using the facilities. That's not something publicly you want to share in that regard, but I will follow up on that and we'll get back to you.
And, and the language will be included in our standard agenda soon?
Actually, the part that I'm talking about is more safety precautions and things.
Understood, but, but also that everybody knows what the rules are and what the.
The decorum that.
Yeah, that's something that could go on our agenda.
Yes, yes, and we're going to be adding that in.
Quickly. Thanks.
Very helpful. Thank you very much. This is really good stuff.
Welcome. Thanks again for your service.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, discussion report by the Planning Director on Board Actions and Other Matters.
Yes, good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I have a couple of items for you. Following up on the November 5th Board of Supervisors Hearing, there were a couple of items. They received a report on regulations, potential regulations on commercial medical cannabis activities and businesses. And they held a lengthy discussion. Their ultimate direction was not to establish any new provisions or regulations today. What they did ask for is requesting a feasibility study for a pilot program allowing retail sales of municipal and recreational cannabis in the unincorporated area of Nyland Acres. And to include a percentage of the proceeds to be directed to the Nyland community. So that's an item that the Planning Division, working with County Council, would pursue. The other item on that same date was the reconsideration of the Urgency Ordinance, in effect, that was prohibiting county approval of new wells, redrilling, deepening of existing wells for oil production that will utilize steam injection in the vicinity of the potable groundwater aquifers, while the county studies potential regulations for regulating this land use. So they held a hearing, had quite a few public comments in regards to this. Their direction was to extend that Urgency Ordinance for the additional 12-month period. Its expiration was going to be in December, so it continues on to December of 2020. And directed, and during that time, County Council and the Planning Division will continue our studying of issues and looking at regulatory framework to return to the board. But they also directed the County Council to send a letter to the United States Geological Survey to complete its study for groundwater quality on the Oxnard Plain as quickly as possible. So those are two items that relate to our overall work plan in the Planning Division. Looking ahead, on December 10th, we will be before the board on the local conservation area, land conservation area contract applications, and the annual report on the LCA program, including updates to the guidelines on which we process these types of land contracts. We also have the Mobile Home Park Overlay Zone, Senior Mobile Home Park Overlay Zone. Those were before you back in August, off the top of my head. So those are moving forward to the board for their ultimate adoption. We did conduct, as the Planning Commission requested we do, in the intermeeting time to meet with the owners of mobile home parks. That happened in the latter part of September. And we've included in the board letter that you will see for the December 10th hearing, our responses to that engagement. And then, looking ahead for your calendar, we have December 19th. We have an appeal that is coming to you that relates to our denial of a zone clearance to add rock to an existing shoreline protection device. And so that hearing will be December 19th. And then I also have, looking ahead for our calendar of hearing dates in 2020, we will be soliciting out with our administrative staff to check on your availability of hearing dates. Probably looking forward into the, the first quarter for sure of the year, so we can start to articulate that we have a full quorum for our items. And then the last item, which Commissioner King might want to follow up on, was the attendance at the California County Planning Commissioners Association that he went in October. And he might have some comments to share with us about how you, what you experienced and learned during that conference.
Right, that's Adam, Items the Planning Commission May Wish to Introduce. Go ahead.
Thank you, and, and thank you, Director Ward, for facilitating my opportunity to attend the California County Planning Commissioners Association Conference up in Chico in Buick County. Just for the record, I, I brought the program and I will share that with my fellow commissioners. But I will tell you, it was a great learning opportunity for me. Even though some of the subject matter was hardly fun, we spent a Saturday morning in paradise and part of Friday and part of Saturday talking to CAL FIRE Incident Commanders and Fire Chiefs and First Responders, citizens who virtually lost everything, even a Paradise Planning Commissioner that escaped with her life while her CAL FIRE husband stayed behind. The biggest lesson from that for me was that I don't care how well you plan, these things can get ahead of you. And so we should always, as planners, be thinking, thinking ahead to how can we make things safer, more armored, especially with changes in climate that we're experiencing. We also got to go look at Orville Dam that collapsed. And finally, I will tell you that our whole discussions about water reminded me that our water situation is far more tenuous than we realize. And that shifts in political winds could absolutely impact us. You know, we, you know, we looked at opportunities to encourage, you know, getting more folks connected to the state water project, but guess what? If the political winds shift, there may be nothing to come down the pipeline. So all of these issues were a great learning opportunity for me. I can't thank you enough and the county enough for facilitating that. And finally, I want to particularly recognize Maureen Sheldon. I'm not even sure what office she's in, but she handled the travel arrangements amazingly. Made my trip so smooth. And of course, I can't forget Megan and Anna, who always do a stellar job of supporting the commission. But please pass on to Maureen my sincere thanks for a job well done.
We'll definitely do that. We appreciate to hear that.
Did they talk about our susceptibility, our water supply, you know, susceptibility to a major earthquake cutting off our water?
Only barely tangentially, because they were so focused on, on water and fire. But even in the water discussion, the fact that earthquakes present an additional risk in terms of water delivery was casually mentioned, but, you know, that's going to be an issue, I'm sure, for future conferences.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I have a question of Dave. You mentioned the board acting on the moratorium for oil well, oil and gas drilling on the Oxnard Plain because of concerns of water contamination. Is, is the applicant today that we dealt with peak subject to that as well? Or would they be if they were permitted to do what they want to do?
Yes, they would be subject to this.
Okay, so they fall within that, that boundary. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just again, general comment. I'm intrigued between this ministerial and discretionary permit process, dealing with these old antiquated SUPs, now CUPs. And it seems like there's a real need to deal with SEQA involved in these things as they, as they come up. I assume the county is going to look at that as part of this whole thing. Trying to compromise and meld those two together, so it's, there's equity. Doesn't ignore the present situation we, we live in today.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a, a good observation, Commissioner Rodriguez. And I can send you, County Council actually prepared a, a report back to the board, which raised that specific issue. And so County Council prepared a report back, I believe it was in early September, stating that the, the county has a good legal argument that it can change our permitting rules to require discretionary approval of new development under these old permits. And so the board has directed Planning and County Council to come back with that change. So I can send you that report back, item that addresses that specific issue.
I watched that hearing. It's important that we understand that moving forward. Is there anything else? Seeing none, I'll adjourn this meeting.